Father, thank you so much for this day. You've been good to us. You blessed us beyond what we deserve. You have looked favorably upon us and forgive us for our failures. In all things, help us to follow you and follow your way because it's the best. We do thank you for our school board and the administration. Their task this year hasn't been an easy one. But you have watched over them and you have guided them. As they work here tonight, would you guard their hearts, their minds, and humble their spirit? That everything that they say and do
reflects you, your will, and the goodness you want to bestow upon us. We ask this in Christ's name. Amen.
All right, it's seven o'clock. I'd like to welcome everyone to the regular December meeting of the Jessman County Board of Education. We're conducting this meeting in Library of West Jessman Middle School to give us a little bit more room to spread out. For everyone watching at home, thank you for joining us. Mr. Moore, would you like to go ahead and call roll, please?
Yes, sir. Board Chair Steven Scrivener.
Here.
Vice Chair Denise Adams. Amy Day.
Here.
Deborah Hood. Bobby Welch.
Here.
We have three present. We have a quorum.
All right, Mr. Moore, are you ready for our pledge allegiance?
Yes, sir.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Our mission statement, Jessman County schools exist to motivate and challenge every child every day to be a caring, responsible citizen and a high-level thinker, performer, communicator, and learner for life. Please let us keep that in mind and help guide our decisions this evening. On to item C, the approval of the agenda. One thing we're going to do is remove item H, the executive session. I want to make sure that we've got a full board complement to discuss some of those items. So we'll postpone that till January. Are there any other changes recommended for the agenda this evening? All right.
Motion to approve the agenda with the exception of section H.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, say no. All right, item D, approval of board meeting minutes from November the 23rd. Everyone's had a chance to review those. Do we have any needed revisions for those? All right, I'll make a motion to approve meeting minutes from November 23rd. Those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, say no. All right, Mr. Moore, construction update.
Yes, we have Margie here this evening. And I believe you have a handout that she's provided.
I'm here primarily for an update on the planning for Rosenwall Dunbar 30-year renovation. I will say, I did not prepare a report since it's only been a couple of weeks since our last meeting on West Jessman, on the CTE additions. Everything continues to go very well, very smoothly. And the contractor has moved into JCTC at this point. And we're beginning our final phase of renovation several months early. So we're all excited about that. This evening, you do have before you a request to approve the BG2 and the BG3 and the design development drawings. I believe that those were sent to you electronically. We now have a little over 100 drawings. I didn't think you wanted a complete set. And I certainly have no intention of reviewing every drawing. But I did think that it would be nice to share with you a few highlights on the overall site plan. We do show that in this initial phase of renovation for Rosenwall, that's focused on Rosenwall, that we will address some traffic patterns for both schools by adding stacking lanes at both schools. And I think we've talked about that before. I don't think that we have directed your attention to the new sidewalk connecting the neighborhood. That's been developed in the past, since we gave an update to you. The plan does show the location of the four classroom addition. The mechanical room addition, the location has changed and it has become much smaller. The funds that we have budgeted for that addition are being spent up in the attic at the request of the maintenance department to install a concrete mezzanine for the mechanical equipment. This will make it much easier to maintain the equipment. And if there's anything I've learned in my 30 years of renovation is that if you can't get to the equipment, it won't be well-maintained. So this ensures that the equipment will be very well-maintained. On the second page, we have, in the past, this drawing has been used primarily to identify reference in large drawings. So this is really the first time that we have put dates and actual phases to the renovation. We've talked about them broadly and broad brush. Our design team, our school team knows what the intention is. I think since schematics, we learned that all of the plumbing in the kitchen is also to be replaced, that under slab plumbing. We know that when we do such an invasive renovation in the kitchen is that, that we can't get it done in just eight weeks over the summer. So as we did at Warner, at Rosenwall, we will, at the beginning of spring break, we'll shut the kitchen down. So food surfaces will be provided satellite. LeAnn's very adept at all of that. She's quite amazing. All of your else folks are quite amazing. So that added a phase to the renovation. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
So
For the last several weeks, you know, which has been very, very elevated. And y'all have probably watched the incident rate and we can look at the incidence rate here in just a few minutes. But you'll remember when we first started out getting to that 25 level, that was the red zone, right? The 25. And unfortunately, we've been hovering in the 60s, mid 60s for several, several weeks now, and that's what those 200 case counts a week actually look like. So that's certainly where we want to go is we want to start moving in that downward incidence rate trend, and we'll look at that in just a minute. So this is hopeful that we've plateaued and we're starting on downhill trend now. Can you bring up the testing, Val? Now, this is going to be a little difficult for you to see here, but the positivity rate of testing, that's one thing that we follow a lot within our community and within the state. Unfortunately, we don't have overall community numbers for Jessman. We only have our Jessman County Health Department testing. And for several, several weeks, we were hovering right around that 10% positivity rate, a little bit higher than what the state positivity rate was at because they'd gotten into the nines for themselves. Our last week, we had a little higher rate at 12.41, but the good news is for the state over about the past week, the positivity rate has been trending down some. And I think for today versus yesterday, it remained virtually about the same. So that's important that positivity rate continues to go down. That 200 cases that you saw, you probably all remember when that positivity rate was below 4%, right? You know, and we thought that that was high then, and then all of a sudden it shot up in the, in the nines, and we really saw what happened with the community spread and with the cases. So hopefully, we're going to see this begin to trend down, especially as the cases trend down. It really should probably do so. If you can bring up that incidence rate, Matt, or Val. Now, if he can blow this up a little bit. This is something that we've been following along the way quite often, okay? And you can see now that we, you know, we were peaking at about 69 on the incidence rate there for the seven-day rolling average, and now we're right around the 55. So that's a good sign that we've started that trend down. Another good sign is when we look at that trending line, you see that, you see that slanted line that's going up, kind of looks brown? You can see that finally, our incidence rate has actually trended below that, which is really a good sign. You know, that tells me that that trending line should start coming down some relative to that. We've been above that trending line for some time now, so it's really positive that we've now, you know, fallen below that trending line over the last few days. So that's really positive and, you know, gives us some hope for our community as well, that we're starting in the, the right direction relative to that. Some other good signs that we've seen that we, you know, really need to probably talk about is obviously back to school. That's something that we all want to get to is where we can get kids back in school and we can get them educated. I don't know if y'all got to watch the governor today, but he kind of pointed out some new guidelines per se that they're going to be looking at for the turn of the year. And he's kind of started presenting some of those, just an overview, all right? And there's going to be some more specifications that are going to come forward. But everybody's probably familiar with the, the actual color map and the recommendations that they made that went along with that. Well, one thing that they're doing now is with the red zone, you know, previously, if you were in the red zone, they pretty much recommended everybody go virtual, correct? Well, with the new guidelines, it's going to give you the opportunity to do a more aggressive hybrid, okay? Now, what that's going to look like, we're still kind of waiting to see, but what that does is it still gives you the option, all right, to be in-person schooling while you're actually in the red zone. Do I, do I think that we're going to come out of that red zone anytime soon, anytime soon? No. I don't think that we're going to see a distinct, very rapid trend down, all right? Because we don't have enough vaccine out there yet that we're going to be able to control these cases. We're in the winter months. We're in the months that, you know, everybody's going to congregate together inside. It's going to make people more at risk, you know, when they're around each other. We're starting to see more clusters in families. So I don't expect that we're going to see the trend down very rapidly. So, you know, what I'm saying is I, I suspect that we're still going to be in this red zone for some time, okay? And that we're not going to trend out of that red zone anytime soon. So the focus of how in-person education can take place and under an aggressive hybrid model, I think is going to be very important to begin looking at and how we can do that. The other, the other thing that he said today was relative to the healthy-at-school guidelines and recommendations, those will no longer be guidelines. They will, they will be mandatory. And that's kind of the one compromise in regards to going to in-person even in the red zone is making those healthy-at-school requirements mandatory. So that's another thing that he's kind of hinted at and pointed at today. So that's just, I mean, kind of hot off the press, you know, for, for his communication today. In regards to something else that is very important with getting back to in-person schooling, and Matt will tell you, that's keeping your staff in school, right? That's keeping them healthy, keeping them in school and not being quarantined where they can educate. In, in the past, the quarantine model has been 14 days if you've been a close contact. Well, as I was telling Matt just last week, CDC come out with some new guidelines where they're looking at a 10-day quarantine or an effective seven-day quarantine if you've had a negative test within 48 hours before that seven days is up. Now, that can, I, I think that that can help staff, you know, quite, quite well because two weeks versus one week is much different, you know, with trying to get substitutes and, you know, keeping people in school. So hopefully, that's one thing that is positive too, is moving from that 14-day to the 10-day and seven with the, with the negative test. So hopefully, that will help. In regards to vaccines, like I talked about, the Pfizer vaccine just came out. Now, you all know that that's going to be pointed and directed initially toward hospitals, hospital workers, okay, which hospitals are pretty much administering themselves, long-term care residents, long-term care staff, which we've got Walgreens and CVS are pretty much taking the role in vaccinating those particular communities. We should hopefully, as local health, be receiving some of our first vaccines, probably the week of Christmas, the last week of this year. Those are going to be focused and directed to first responders initially, so that's going to be our focus within our community. But we've all heard that school personnel are going to be that essential personnel that they're going to target as well. You know, that's one effort toward trying to get enough of your school staff, your school population vaccinated where you can get in school and stay in school. What that looks like and when we expect that to roll out, I really don't have any updated information yet. I expect to get some of that information. Hopefully, I think Thursday, the, the commissioner is supposed to speak with us, hopefully give us a little bit more direction on what that looks like. We know that there's a lot of Moderna vaccine coming out toward the end of this, this current calendar year, and that's the vaccine that we should be getting. That's the vaccine that we can store the easiest because we pretty much can hold it for 30 days before we actually have to administer it. So that's kind of what we're focused on from a vaccination respect. There's still, you know, a lot of unknowns relative to that, but something that we need to be working toward is how they're going to allow us to vaccinate the schools and who's going to be responsible for that. I expect that they will, you know, put that in the hands of local health departments, but I don't know. You know, we've seen a lot of this stuff taken away from local health departments, kind of putting in to private-public partnerships. So I'm not exactly sure how they're going to roll that out at this point in time yet, but, but hopefully, you know, if they put it in our hands, we will find the most efficient and effective ways to get that rolled out to the schools. And hopefully, there'll be a high uptake rate, right? I know a lot of that's going to be relative to communication. A lot of that's going to be relative to what, you know, folks see happen with some of these first vaccinations that take place in the U.S. People are going to be keeping an eye on that, you know, Pfizer versus Moderna, you know, and all the communications relative to that. So that's one thing that we're going to have to do very effectively is be able to communicate the safety and the efficacy of these vaccines to make sure that we get as much uptake as we possibly can within our community. That's the one thing that's going to get us back to a more normal way of life, obviously. One thing that I might mention that, you know, people might have the expectation that once they get vaccinated, okay, they're not a risk to others anymore, you know, but even Pfizer, the CDC, they've already put out the guidelines and the recommendations that you still should continue to take those precautions, the safety precautions of masking, the social distancing, the hand washing, all right, the sanitizing that goes along with it. Because the way that these vaccines work, they basically will provide an immune response that will help protect the individual from having severe complications if they contract COVID, okay? But that doesn't mean that they can't still be infectious if they get the virus again, all right? So that's one thing that we have to keep in mind. So we're probably going to see these types of protocols in place, you know, certainly throughout, you know, this school year, and who knows how far that will go into 2021? Because we don't probably see herd immunity occurring probably until late 2021, probably at the best, okay? So I'll stop with that. There's probably a whole lot more I could say, but I'll, I'll leave the time to questions if you have any questions for me or...
You were pretty comprehensive. I was jotting down questions as you were talking, then you'd cover the note and I'd just cross it off. So that was very good, Randy. I do appreciate it. Anybody else?
I would like to ask if you have any information from Pfizer or about the active vaccine and what's in it.
I'm sorry. I had a hard time here.
Have you got any information on the, the vaccines and whether or not, how they're, how they are created, things about the active ingredients, all that kind of stuff about anything, information?
They've put out a lot of information. I'm not going to answer any technical information relative to that. You know, what we watch is the safety, you know, the safety precautions, expectations of it, you know, in the development of the vaccines. I know everybody thinks that they moved it out very quickly, and they did. You know, they went about manufacturing these vaccines in a different way, but that doesn't mean that they didn't go through, you know, three stages of trials. And I think that it's been over about 40,000 people that actually participated in that trial, those trials that they, they watched, you know? So going through the, you know, the, what they call the AICP, which is the advisory or the ACIP, the Advisory Committee for Immunization Practices, you know, they go through those committees and they vet them, and then it goes through the FDA. The FDA vets it. They recommend it. Goes to the CDC. So as far as I'm concerned, it's went through all of the particular avenues where we can feel pretty safe about it. I think that the governor mentioned today that he should be receiving it this week, you know? And I think for us, that is setting the example that he feels like that it's safe and he's encouraging everybody in the communities, once it comes your turn, to take the vaccine because that's what's going to get us back to normal.
I want to ask my question about the vaccine. I think the advisor actually had issues for whatever reason. I don't know why, but it was...
And I don't know about that. I know they recommended it. They, they only approved it for 16 and older, okay? Not below that, but 16 and older is who they've recommended it for. But if, if you've got particular questions, if you want to email me, I'll get with my medical director, and he can probably give you a more focused answer and a more technical answer and response for that, okay?
Anybody else? Randy?
All right.
All right, Mr. Moore.
I'll just make a couple of quick comments. That playoff of what Randy had identified from the vaccine information for our staff, we are supposed to be getting guidance from the Kentucky Department of Education that will help us develop our roster and our protocol for administering the vaccine. So as we get that information, I'm going to be communicating it out to our staff, and I'll definitely share that with the Board of Education as well. Also, wanted to just identify that the information that was given to us by the governor is relatively new and fresh. It was information, though, that I had anticipated coming, came to us today at 4 o'clock. We got it in his briefing. I'm meeting with the Kentucky Association of School Superintendents tomorrow where we will be talking about this topic, and then I'm going to meet with Jessman County's chiefs right after that to discuss some specifics for Jessman County schools, and then have a meeting with the Kentucky Department of Education following that, where they're going to answer some additional questions that have come throughout the day tomorrow, and then have a meeting with all of our principals where we have already started anticipating some of this, so trying to be responsive and built some ideas and plans. So all of that's going to happen tomorrow, and as soon as we get our plan finalized, I'll get that message out to our families just as quickly as we can because I know they're all eager to know before the break what they need to be thinking about as they transition back to school in January. I just wanted to let you guys know that we're on top of all of that and working very collaboratively with people at the state level as well as our, our team of people internally. That's all I have for you, sir.
All right. Any board member communications?
I just want to take a second to pass along our condolences to our colleagues in Fayette County on the loss of their superintendent, Mr. Manny Falk. Everyone I've spoken to that knew Manny is, is talking, has talked about what an amazing educator he was and how he promoted learning opportunities for everyone. So just want to pass along condolences to those, those folks in Fayette County. No audience communications tonight. So it's 7:34. We will take a brief recess, so the Jessman County Board of Edu-, or the Jessman County School District Finance Corporation can hold a short meeting. Meeting of the Jessman County School District Finance Corporation. Mr. Moore, will you call roll, please?
Board Chair, Stephen Scricker.
Here.
Vice Chair, Neese Adams. Bobby Welsh.
Here.
Amy Day.
Here.
And Deborah Hood. We have three present. We have a quorum.
All right. Our agenda tonight consists of one item, so I will make a motion that we adopt, adopt the agenda as is.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. All right. The only business item tonight is a resolution of the Board of Directors of the Jessman County School District Finance Corporation authorizing the execution by the President and Secretary of the Corporation of a partial release of statutory mortgage lien and a deed to the Jessman County Board of Education conveying to said board certain school property. Any questions about that resolution?
Second.
I guess we need a motion to adopt the resolution. Is that right, Howard?
That's right.
Okay.
I'm going to motion to adopt.
All right. Amy makes a motion.
Second.
Bobby seconds it. All those in favor of adopting, approving the motion to adopt the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. All right. I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting of the Jessman County School District Finance Corporation.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. 7:37. Okay. It's 7:38. We'll reconvene the regular meeting of the Jessman County Board of Education. We are into the consent agenda with 15 items. Do we have any questions or comment for Matt and his team regarding the consent agenda?
We'll show an appreciation for Walmart for their donation of $2,000. Consent item 10, and then consent item 14. Appreciate all the work that went into receiving the Crusade for Children grant.
Absolutely. All right. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Question for the consent.
I'll second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. All right. We're into the action items. Item G1.
This is the second reading for a policy 08.221, which is to revise our grading policies for AP and dual-credit courses. It's my recommendation that policy 02.221 be approved up on the second reading.
All right. Any discussion among the board? Motion to approve G1?
Second.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Okay. Item G2, Mr. Moore.
Yes, Margie spoke to everyone this evening about the renovation for Rosenwall Dunbar, and this is the BG2 and BG3 for the 30-year comprehensive renovation on that facility. And that comes to the project cost is 15,000, 15,446,140.50, and it's my recommendation to approve BG2 and 3 as presented and submitted as the documents are accompanied to Kentucky Department of Education.
Any questions or comments?
Yeah, much better than the 15-year.
Yeah.
Oops.
All right. I'll make a motion to approve item BG2.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. All right. Item G3.
I guess this is to surplus three vehicles, two vehicles out of our inventory, and Jason went through that bidding process, and you see the accompanying documents, and it's my recommendation that you approve the documents as attached.
Motion to approve G3.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. All right.
G4, Mr. Moore.
Yes, this is the resolution that we had just discussed with the property that's adjacent to Red Oak Elementary, and it is my recommendation that you approve the resolution as presented.
All right. Any discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve item G4. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no.
All right. Item G5, Mr. Moore.
Yes, this is for the Providence School Project, and I'll let Howard talk a little bit about this as well, but we had this, this is liquidated damages at a rate of $500 per day, and we've estimated that our, identified that this project was 234 days behind the projected timelines, which came to $117,000. Howard, would you like to add anything to that?
That was the consultation that was made by the architect based on the record that they, that they had and based on the contract. And the contract provides for the decisions to withhold certification or payment of liquidated damages as a part of the contract itself. Since that time, I think Mr. Tatum has submitted a calculation that considers 24 days less than the 234, and I think the architects have also reviewed that, and they came up with possibly 17 days less time than the bid documents. But I think that they may be here to, the architect and Isaac Tatum may be here tonight to discuss that part of it, but the consideration for time, timing elements are to be submitted to the architect, and the architect under the contract is the decision-maker related to those. So at, at this point, I think the submission is for the certification of payment, but reducing it for the amount of the liquidated damages plus, I think, a premium for bond, a bond premium that was maybe agreed to, but the, the architect or Mr. Tatum may want to speak to that in, in the consideration of, of this, of this payment.
I guess the only question I would have about that is is there a need to litigate that or litigate that or discuss that at a board meeting? I feel that's something that's probably, if there's some disagreements or there's some details to iron out, I feel like that's probably best done between you guys, Mr. Tatum, and the architect, and if an agreement can't be reached, I feel like that's kind of where the next step, it doesn't come before the board, it, it goes to someone else with some more authority to decide on that at the end of the day. I mean...
Well, I think what is being submitted is the amount less the liquidated 117, 117,000, which is the 234 days, and the bond premium. And that, if, if the board has any questions, I think there may be a representative of the architect that's here that...
So wait, what's being requested here is the amount less the 117, plus the bond, plus the bond premium?
Right. It's being withheld.
Okay.
As a part, under the terms of the contract, based on the request by, and notice by the, by the superintendent to both the architect and Isaac Tatum. But I think, and I don't know whether representatives are here that want to, if they want to speak to that, but that, that's what is being presented, is the payment.
And I'm, I'm just assuming they disagree with that amount?
I, I understand that the, Mr. Tatum has submitted a, an email that says that he calculated 24 days less that should be reduced because of...
Versus 234?
Right, off of the 234.
That seems like a pretty wide gap.
Well...
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. He's saying 210 versus 234.
Right. He's saying that, he's saying that the period of time was reduced from the doc, bid documents to the time that it was set up so that there were actually 24 less days.
So before we sign off on this, is that something where you guys, the architect and Mr. Tatum should all kind of maybe come to an agreement before we process this?
Well, I, I don't think the certification and what we have...
If I might, might interrupt, I might.
Sure.
So I have many discussion. I'm sorry. You know, the project.
Can you come up to the podium? I think we just have a hard time here.
Please. But I guess I just, before, before we go way off on the tracks here, I don't feel like it's up to us to necessarily...
And I have a agenda of discussion items. If I could...
Appreciate it.
So on December 9th, we received a certified letter from Jessman County Board of Education relating their intent to assess liquidated damages to Isaac Tatum construction on the Providence School Project. This letter made note of 234 days at a rate of $500 per day, equalling to $117,000. In an email from Superintendent Val, he said if I had any questions, feel free to contact him. I called Val on December 9th with questions and comments. He suggested that I come to the December 14th board meeting with the questions and comments that I had relayed to him on the phone. I relayed to him on the phone. The following is an outline of these discussion items for your review. These should help you more understand the reasons for delay on the project and why we should not be assessed liquidated damages. So I've got a list of points of discussion here, which add up to what we're talking about, two hundred and thirty-four days. So after reviewing the contract, we realized that date of substantial completion posted on the contract is incorrect. Per Dendum Six of bid documents, it states that anticipated start of construction is September twenty-fourth, two thousand and eighteen. Therefore, substantial completion date would be October fourteenth, two thousand and nineteen. Actual date of start of construction and date of signed contract was October eighteenth, two thousand and eighteen, instead of September twenty-fourth, two thousand and eighteen. Therefore, date of substantial completion should be changed to November seventh, two thousand and nineteen. This adds twenty-four days to the contract completion time. Also, for information purposes, bid date was September fifth, two thousand and eighteen. So that's what y'all were talking about earlier.
Okay, I guess in the, in just in the interest of everyone's time here tonight and, and not putting the board in a position of whether or not we're, I, I mean, obviously we weren't intimately involved in the project the way Val, Jason, to a degree Howard, and even Matt were. I mean, I, I don't want to put us in a position of having to rule on kind of the logistics of this. I kind of look at that as something that you guys need to iron out and come to some sort of agreement, and if you can't come to an agreement, then I think that's where, I hate to say it, that's what lawyers are for. Because, I mean, we can go through all this stuff, and then it's going to get into a, well...
Well, I think it's something that y'all need to be aware of.
Of, of course, of course.
I mean, it's, it's not just cut and dry. It's not just cut and dry.
Fair, fair enough.
And, you know, like the...
I mean, I know we had issues with the footers. I distinctly remember that.
And that was forty-two days, right?
But, but there's no one here that's a construction manager that could get into this with any technical expertise and sit here and make a ruling on...
And I'm not really going to get into it.
Of, of course, I know. I know, I'm just saying, like, it's, I feel like that's getting us out of our lane here and trying to rule on, we agree with this point, we don't agree with this point, because none of us were intimately involved with what was going on at the time, so...
And I think this is a...
Sure.
And this is how, as you know, and I'm sure you realize that during two thousand and nineteen, it's very wet, very muddy, and it's hard to do construction. So I've just had a diagram here, so it's a pretty colorful diagram. It just shows how many days we did have to do work. As you know, the, the job did have a rebid, and, you know, we didn't get started till in the worst parts of the year. But here are the days. You got your green days, your red days, and your yellow days. Your green days is rain days per contract. Red is the extra rain days, and yellow is the muddy days due to rain. So these very colorful columns here are days when you couldn't do work. Now, if you could have done all the work in September of two thousand and nineteen, it'd be a great project, but...
So, let me, let me mention that the, and Mr. Tatum, I, I think you maybe would understand that under the contract, the decision maker is the architect under the contract, and these, the calendar days are submitted to the architect. Is that your understanding?
Yeah, and that's what we did. Of course, there were some extenuating circumstances too. I mean, that's in this whole list of things here, and I, I understand, and I appreciate your comments.
So, let me ask this. There's clearly some disagreement, you know, in where things stand with this, and I, and again, I want to put this kind of, the ball back in the district administration's hands to work with you to figure out what the resolution should look like, whether there's common ground to find. If there's not, then I think, again, that's where somebody that's more versed in the contract of this project, the legal nature of what's going on, can kind of sit down with everyone and say, here's the direction this needs to go in. Should we approve this tonight, and then again, let this situation work itself out?
Yeah, because this is the approval of a minimal payment, and then we can always determine later to pay the rest, or through litigation be...
Okay.
So, so my recommendation would be...
Or other parts of the project too, that are considered.
I, I don't understand.
I think that, that in the request, that there are, there's a holdback for the project.
There's still, there's still fifty-one thousand dollars in the payment that is still...
David says fifty-one thousand.
Right.
Of course, there's actually just two or three things, really, but...
But it's still there.
But it, it's, it says that.
Yeah, it's still at fifty-one thousand. So that is, that is outside of any of the money that is being discussed at this particular point.
I'm not arguing on that.
Yeah. What is being discussed at this particular point is the maximum for the two hundred and thirty-four days at five hundred dollars a day, and then there was a five thousand dollar builder's risk insurance coverage. There had been a conversation between us and Isaac at that particular point about that. So those are the two things that are outstanding in this. So what it looks like, if you'll look at the payout, it, it is the remaining amount of money, the fifty-one thousand, the, the remaining amount of money minus this, minus the fifty-one thousand, works itself out to sixty-eight something.
Sixty, three hundred and fourteen hundred bucks.
Correct. And that's, what you're being asked to do at this, in this particular agenda, is to approve that payment, and what I'm, what I'm hearing you say to me, Mr. Scrivener, is that then at this particular point, you want us to come back, working with the architect, working with Isaac, and see if we can come up with some kind of resolution that could be brought back at the next meeting, or brought back at some particular point in the future to try to resolve this outside of...
Yeah, I just don't think we're in a position to sit here and say we side with Mr. Tatum, or the board, or the district, or, I mean, we're just not in a position to be able to, to, to weigh the merits of either argument, because, because again, we say, well, we're going to side with the district. Mr. Tatum disagrees. We say we're going to side with Mr. Tatum, the district. I mean, so it's, I, I feel like there, there needs to, there needs to be something...
This is, this is something that y'all need to have.
And this is good information.
This is good information, just like we...
This is information that I've also handed off to Mr. Ross over here, who is part of Ross Tarrant, for him to review as well. We just talked briefly.
Okay.
So we'll follow up with this, but what's on the agenda is for you just to approve the other.
So let's, let's go ahead and...
And concerning the bad days, you know, for getting work, we, we asked for one hundred and eighteen days, and it was denied by the architect. We did send them in a little bit late, but that being said, the site that we're supposed to get our information from, it was closed down early in the project. So after it was opened up, we got our information together, we sent it into the architect, and they denied it.
Okay.
So that was one hundred and eighteen days. There's other extenuating, well, it's pretty good.
And that's listed in here.
Okay, so...
But it's something that everybody needs to be aware of before they say two hundred and thirty-four days, which the two hundred and thirty-four days are erroneous anyways, because they're...
Okay.
Based off contract.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Tatum. Do we have any more questions as a board?
Let me say that the contract provides that the decision maker is the architect, and the type, the question, the operation time is also under the contract. If the decision maker on that is the architect.
Fair enough. So that's, that's why I say...
Not saying that...
I feel like more conversations need to happen amongst everyone before the board gets back involved in adjudicating anything. Any more questions from either the two board members?
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the payment subject to the reduction for contract liquidated damages and extended builder's risk insurance premium pending further discussions with the administration. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Okay?
So, when do you think we'll see some more discussion on this?
I'll...
I've been working with Howard, and we'll decide some of the next steps, and, and one of us will definitely get with you.
Okay, because there's many dollars worth that I've already had to pay, and as you look at that agenda that I've sent, shown you.
And, and I'll definitely go through that with them.
And I appreciate it.
It'd be important, because the architect is going to be very submissive, and so the decision makers are under the contract. That would be important.
Well, as you can tell, I don't agree with the decision maker, so...
Well, the contractor's going to control that, Mr. Qu... what we can do to work that out. And that's under Art fifteen, and the claim...
Okay, like I say, I'm not, I'm not here to get into the weeds of things. I was wanting to relay all this information.
And I appreciate it, Mr. Tatum. Thank you.
All right, thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. All right, Mr. Welch?
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Seven fifty-nine.